So next up is our department work sessions for DPW Police and Fire.
Okay, good evening, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity here to present our three departments that really comprise of our public safety here in the city of Scranton. We'll start with Public Works. I'd like to also mention that, you know, we're closing out today trying to get the talking points in order, and we realize that these three departments comprise of roughly 68% of the overall budget, the total budget, greater than two-thirds of all of our spending here in the city is comprised of these three departments. So they're vitally important as we walk through these slides. So let's talk a little bit about our 2022 overview. So the Department of Public Works, Department of Public Works, you know, is a vital service. It's the department that most residents and businesses see and touch pretty much weekly, if not daily. It comprises of our refuse collection, our recyclables. They plow our streets. They fill our potholes. The typical work that you would see a city or municipality take care of on a regular basis set aside for the fire and the police department, Public Works is obviously the one that's mostly in our neighborhoods on a regular basis. So just an overview for what we've accomplished so far this year. I'm proud to say that the city and IMA Local 2305, we came to terms on contract negotiations earlier this year, grateful for the open dialogue and the work that both the union and the city put forth in those negotiations. I think it's a fair deal for both the city and our employees. So that took some time. It took some effort, but at the end of the day, I think it's good and fair for both sides. We've also invested in some new equipment, and I could have Scott Petrofis talk about the investment we've made this year. If you want to just talk a little bit about the amount of vehicles and what they were.
Sure. We had the opportunity to address several of our deficiencies around equipment. So this year, we were able to replace our track loader, our skid steer. We purchased six new refuse trucks. We purchased a MowerMax boom mower to replace the old brush hog. We purchased a new VAC truck, which I'm sure everybody's seen in the city, a vital piece of equipment. And then we also received our LEAF VAC from the 902 recycling grant.
So I think it's also important to point out that no different, the DPW is no different than any other department or any other business, the cost for us to produce these vehicles and the equipment has gone up exponentially, and so has the wait time as we order these vehicles. That too, there's also an 18-month lead on most of those items. So the department over the last two years done a great job, and you know, Scott and the others who was predecessors have done a great job really keeping up and maintaining that fleet and doing a better job at getting ahead so that we're not caught with a depleted fleet. We also addressed a lot of issues related to neighborhood stormwater. I put up a couple of points up there, East Mountain. Obviously, there was two or three points up on East Mountain. I know Councilman King, I know you're intimately familiar with one of them in your neighborhood, but there were a couple of places up on East Mountain where you addressed those issues before we went through the paving process. And then there was a spot over on Parrot Avenue. There was an issue with flooding. It made some local news after a couple flooding incidents that had not happened in the past, but we did have two incidents this year where it did flood Parrot Avenue, but we did address that with our new Vector. We did get in, we did some cleaning up and some of the lines over there. I think for right now, it's just a temporary fix. We do have some permanent things that need to, but it's going to require some outside contracting, but nonetheless, I think it's taken care of at this point for now. And there are other parts of the city down behind Weston Field House in that neighborhood. We had some concerns with some catch basins and some flooding, even though there were some newly paved areas. There were some issues with some of the neighborhoods down there. So our crews, our force crews went out and addressed some of those concerns. And there are other places throughout the city that we addressed some of the stormwater and flooding issues as well. But as we have addressed through the West Mountain or the Kaiser Valley and now the East Mountain stormwater plans, we'll address, we'll continue to address these issues that dot throughout the city. Talking a bit about the paving, I could tell you that early on when the paving was starting this year, we actually had some phone calls, some residents and others calling in complaining that there was too much paving going on. I kid you not, because it was difficult to navigate the city. I'll tell you that it's good to know that we had touched all parts, all different neighborhoods throughout the city. And I know that there are a lot of other streets that need to be addressed and courts and alleys, and we have a list, and Scott and I were just out last week identifying some of those streets for next year so we could put an RFP out. But the city, between the city, OECD, and our utilities, we addressed a lot of streets and a lot of bad streets that we've actually addressed and had them paved this year. We'll continue to do that and do it next year. Scott touched on the jet VAC or the Vector vehicle. That has been throughout the city. We identified at least 75-plus catch basins. May not seem like much, but the fact is that leaves, debris, dirt, sediment, all gets in those catch basins. They plug drains. We get a decent rainstorm, they plug up, they flood the street, and we get complaints, but our crews have been, done a great job getting out this year. Once that vehicle came in, we got it in service, and we were able to address a lot of those catch basins. I know there are a couple others out there, but we have done a great job catching up with them.
Can I ask a quick question about that topic?
Sure.
So I've seen the VAC truck too, and it's pretty cool, and I'm thrilled that we have it. I've still heard for some residents that their areas, and I don't know where they're actually at, haven't been touched yet. So you said, have you identified 75? Is there more than 75?
Oh, absolutely. There's more.
Like, I don't know. I don't know how many there are. I'd love to know.
Some of the issues come into play of whether or not there are storm basins, whether they're a combined sewer or storm basin, whether it's American Waters. So there's still a lot of that going on. So we are still getting complaints, and we are addressing them on a personal level.
So with that said, are you going to prepare some type of yearly schedule? I know some areas have more debris than others, but are you going to put together some type of schedule where this truck is utilized on a schedule basis?
Well, we do it internally. So we've got spreadsheets built of what's been completed, what's been done, and then what's still out there to be done. If that's something you wanted us to share, it's readily available.
When you put it together, and it's a schedule, once it's a schedule, we'd like to see it, I believe.
So with that being said, the thing that I just heard was, there's still some discussion as to whose catch basins they are. Have we decided on a process to use to determine which ones are ours?
Correct. Don King and his department are currently putting together a book of all of the basins in the city of Scranton, and it's very visual. It's electronic, and it's identify exactly which ones are ours. And now we have the opportunity, as we add new ones, to add them to that, which is never, we've never had it before. So it's always been, you know, phone call, phone call, phone call.
Do you happen to know how far along you are with that process?
I know he's begun. He's shown me a couple of pages. I don't know what his completion timeline is, but they are actively working on it.
Okay. So once that's in place, then we'll be thinking about scheduling, or we're already doing some scheduling?
Yeah, sure. Well, we can put a schedule out.
So another quick one. So once the basins are identified, whether they're ours or theirs, once we know that they're theirs, what are we going to do? Are we going to remind them that they're theirs and take care of them? And maybe they don't know they're theirs.
Well, they have a...
Hopefully, they know they're theirs, but...
American Water has actually done a pretty fair job. I mean, we have a monthly meeting with American Water and the gas company identifying, you know, products they're working on and whatnot. But in regards to the stormwater inlets, they have a pretty good handle on which ones are theirs or not. The issue comes in is that when a resident or someone complains or there's an issue with it, they call in the City Hall. They're not calling American Water first. They call us. It's upon us, then it comes upon us to go identify whether it's ours or not. So any system that's out, any inlet that's out there on a combined system is American Water's. Anything that's just stormwater inlet, that's the city's responsibility. And as the American Water Company does separate the stormwater from the sanitary lines, those stormwater inlets will become our responsibility as well. So for right now, again, most residents or those who call and complain will call in the City Hall. They'll call 311. They'll let us know. Someone from one of the DPW crews goes out, will identify whether or not it's the city's or American Water's. But we have done a much better job communicating with American Water, identifying them. In all honesty, I know we had a call American Water. There was an issue right in front of West Grant High School. Ironically, it ended up being our response. It was our inlet. Our Vector truck was broke. It was right in the very beginning. It was on a recall for a part, and they actually helped us out, and they went over, took care of it to make sure before school started. So we do have a good working relationship with American Water as it relates to the sewer stuff as well.
So that's great. So when you get there with identifying whose drains are whose, could you please put something together, something that'll be resident-friendly, put it on the website, so they can go and look, and they'll go, Jesus, that's not mine, or it's not the city's, and they'll make the right call to the right entity to have it corrected.
So there's some GS mapping that has gone on. They've identified those, and we are cleaning that up, even though it's a couple of years deep in this transaction. We're still identifying. So as soon as we get something that we think we go public with, we're glad to do that. It won't be, actually, it'd probably benefit us if we get less phone calls.
Have you also, you've identified the ones that require more frequent cleaning, so the ones that are more prone to...
Yeah, there probably are some that we identified that are more troublesome than others. Yeah, for sure.
Because if you do have a schedule, then those you might want to put on, you know, maybe it's twice a year. That needs to be taken care of as opposed to once a year.
Yeah, for sure. And actually, when I presented here before regarding a regional stormwater authority, these are some of the things that that authority would actually pick up on, where there would be an opportunity to do some regular maintenance, some street sweeping, getting that sediment off the streets before it even gets into the catch basin. So this would be, you know, and really, that long-term goal would be to have that authority managing those things so that our DPW crews could just go out on emergencies and manage things that are right in front of us that are impacting the neighborhood right then and there. So it is a work in progress, and I don't know, how many inlets were? Do you remember that number?
2,600.
Yeah, there's a lot of inlets in the city, so we'll get there.
And then I did just want to clarify, in case we receive additional complaints from residents, so if you find that it is American Waters, then you'll let the person know about that, and then they could take care of calling American Water.
Yeah, they're very responsive when we contact them. They're very responsive.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving on here, prepared bridge construction, PennDOT. With PennDOT, I know you're all probably familiar. We have currently four bridges that are city-owned that have been conveyed over to PennDOT, currently under final design. We have over the next three or four years, there's a total of seven bridges that we're working with PennDOT on currently. The reason I put that on there is there is an immense number, amount of planning that goes into it. Not that any of our forces are out there actually doing the bridge work or replacing the bridges, but from a planning standpoint, we have our, we're here tonight with the Fire and Police Department. Every time we do close a bridge, obviously, it impacts our detours and our emergency responses on things. So there's a lot of coordination, a lot of planning. At this point, we are, and by the way, we do have a portion financed, 5% share in those bridges that are being replaced. But that being said, there's a lot of time that goes in through our project manager and our different departments as we work with PennDOT. I believe that those bridges will be going out, two of them will be going out next year, so that process of detours and construction and all that, one of those bridges will start relatively soon. Then I put up there Tree City USA, because I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Santoli. I know he's been here a long, long time, and I really do appreciate, I think he was next door tonight with Scott earlier, but I can't tell you the amount of work that he's put into it and helping the city stay in that Tree City USA, in that obligation. We did, we budgeted with the thanks of the City Council last year. We brought it back up to 175,000. We did put it back in this year, but Mr. Santoli is a huge asset to the city. We really appreciate the work that he does do for us. Just wanted to point that out. He does work closely with DPW every time a tree gets hit. If it needs to be clipped, it needs to be cut, it needs to be replanted. Our forces typically work with Mr. Santoli on those things.
So can I just jump right back to paving, just for a second?
Sure.
I know there's a schedule for next year. The biggest complaints I got was on one street overall, and it was Pike, and I want to thank you for patching it because it hasn't been patched in a long time. But can you confirm to me that it's going to be paved next year? Because that's what we were kind of led to believe. I'd like to know, so these residents will know, that their street is going to be paved next year.
So can I confirm, I don't think I can confirm it tonight sitting here. We do have, we have a very long list. I mean, we could certainly go back through, and we will do this again before as a final list. If you're suggesting it's been, we could certainly go back and take a look at it and put that next to some of the other streets that are out there, and then we'll put that up against how much money we actually have to spend on the paving next year, but we'll certainly prioritize it and see what we can do to...
You know, it's been 20 years, and that's all I keep hearing.
Okay.
So I see from that line item that, I was just going to say that, I see from that line item that it, that is to be increased in the budget for this year, right, from 850,000 to a mil, what we had used over 1.1 mil this year, so we had actually gone over budget in the resurfacing.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's because it's reimbursed. Well, liquid fuels gets reimbursed back. We do have a liquid fuels account that does get reimbursed back. So we can be a little flexible in that space in terms of what we take back out of liquid fuels, but it's not just paving that we reimburse for. There's other, we reimburse for some hours on some of the workforce when we're doing things. So we do keep track of our liquid fuels time. Again, obviously, paving is a piece of it. There are other entities, or other pieces that fall into it that we could reimburse for. So we'll, if Mr. McCandless will take a look at that. We'll mark that as a priority. We'll take a look and see if we can't get that moved up or see where it's at on the list for Pike Street.
Thank you.
Yep.
When it comes to paving, the amount that we spent last year and the amount we're spending this year, does that fall in line with what we've spent in past years? Is it more or less?
So I think it's a, that's a fair question. We did use some ARP money last year for some paving, so we probably did a little bit more than last year. I think what, I think what was so evident was that we had so much going at the same time is because we had our OECD paving, which is completely separate from what we do at low-income neighborhoods with the city, along with utilities that were doing a lot of major, a lot of major replacement and work. So we had a lot of streets that were paved, repaved last year, but for different reasons. It wasn't just city paving. So I don't think we'll have it quite to that level next year in terms of the overall, but I think the city has done a pretty fair job over the last couple of years of keeping up with it. And don't forget, the cost of oil and the asphalt has increased as well, so you're getting less streets paid for the same amount of money. So we'll do the best we can. The other thing too, I think it'd be fair to point out, last year, we did have, we put out the contract, if you recall, last year, we extended it over. We held it over for the wintertime because we got a better price in the fall last year to carry over to the spring. So we did get, we got better pricing to do more work in the spring because we held it over from last year. So just, just wanted to put you on, you know, make that a note. That's why we had so much paving last year and this year. Anything else? So here's some of our expenditures for this year. I already mentioned, Scott talked about the purchase of new equipment, you know, some facility upgrades. We've had some work done, some safety things that we're still continuing to work through and get them put out. Some of the projects, we did some, we did some forced paving. We did take care of some with our own paving equipment, our crews. We did some alleyways, and we took care of some of our own personal, not personal, but our city-owned assets. We took on some of the stormwater, as I mentioned. Our crews, again, did a great job getting up there, identifying them. Steve Teeman and the guys did a great job identifying, you know, some changes in how water's moving, hydrology, putting in new pipes, really doing a great job, especially up on East Mountain. And then we talked about the investment in our basins. We talked about that. We do have a bunch of new basins that we actually, our crews put in this year, full basins and tied them into our existing stormwater line. And the LED conversion, that's something I think we, it's hard to quantify this, but we changed all the lights on our expressways over to LED lighting, and it made a tremendous difference on our way in. It wasn't driving into the city. It's not just from a visual standpoint, so we had, it was from a, from a, from safety for sure, but also from a cost effectiveness. Those old lights were very expensive to manage and maintain, and we all know from the budget we introduced that the price of electricity has almost doubled for this year for us anyway. So we appreciate the fact that we were able to do that and get that behind us. And then talking about maintenance, you know, streets and highways, again, our select departments in here, our refuse and our recycling crews have done a great job. I know we had a little snafu here in the summertime, but I think since then, we've regained our balance. We've, we've got the contract behind us, so they've done a great job. But talking about the DPW, and again, we're sitting here with the Fire and Police, I think we sometimes forget that our Public Works crews also respond to emergencies. Traffic light poles go down, car accidents, property damage, street closures. They too work in all kinds of weather, weekends, nights, whenever they're needed. So this is, again, an important piece as we budget through to make sure we do have those resources financially and otherwise available to them. And then we talked a little bit about our traffic. Our traffic division, again, doing a great job maintaining our traffic lights, our signals, our crosswalks. We paint them. We maintain them. I know we get behind on some things. I know Mr. McCandless is still waiting on St. Anne's, and we got to get the legislation to make sure that our square footage was right with that. But so our traffic division does a great job, and they do a lot of good work for us here in the city. And the last thing I think is important to note here is that although code enforcement and our community development department does take the brunt of the light removal, our DPW forces have been a part of that on some of those, some of those streets and neighborhoods, you know, taking care of refuse, taking care of some blighted properties, cutting down some of the land bank. I know Parks is doing some of them, but our DPW crews have done some as well. So I just wanted to point out that they've done a great job, again, keeping up with the maintenance, and there's just some of the things that we spent some dollars on this year. So moving ahead to 2023, the highlights, I just want to point out, again, the employees, and that's kind of a number, it's a round number that we spend just on our, on our employees. That is a, out of 19.2 million dollar budget for this year, 6 million of it is earmarked for our employees, that's their salaries, their health care, their benefits and whatnot. I also put up there for the need for our, the two new, the two new jobs that are in the budget is the engineer project coordinator and the DPW floater. Both of those positions have already been identified in prior budgets. The engineering project coordinator had not been funded in a number of years. So I'll get to, when I get down to FEMA, and I think Chief Judge could talk a little bit more about it to help me articulate the importance of that position. So we, we have so many, I just rattled off, you know, all the projects we had been working on. At DPW, we don't have a project coordinator that kind of manages all of those projects for us. If we get any type of subsidy, if we have any type of assistance, if it's a federally funded program, whatever it may be, there is a remarkable amount of paperwork and follow-up that needs to go on for these projects. In particular, and I'm going to hop down here, and I'm going to pass down to Chief Judge to comment on it, but that 3.4 that's budget for FEMA this year, that is time sensitive for this year. The 3.4 million is an estimate that the federal government had put out on us dating back to when the incident occurred, but that's 70-plus projects. That's a real number. I believe the number is 72, but I think that's a real number. And I put up there 75% federal and 25% state reimbursable. That is, that 100% of the reimbursable coming back to the city. The 3.4 million is their estimate. When they came out and they did their estimates, they may have identified, again, maybe 100 cubic yards of material in a certain creek bed that need to be removed. They gave an estimate of what the costs were based on that 100 cubic yards. If we come tomorrow and it's a 200 cubic yards, they're only going to pay us for 100 cubic yards at today's rate, but they're only going to pay us for 100 cubic yards. So that 3.4 million is really an estimate, but I can't stress enough the importance of how important it is that we actually have someone dedicated to making sure that all of our paperwork is up to par on this. And Chief, can you kind of a little more about that? The chief is much more familiar with the FEMA process than I am.
So where we live in the city of Scranton, it's not a case of if, it's a case of when we're going to have another flooding event. Just because of the nature, the way the city is situated, we deal with these. All of you have been lifetime city residents, for the most part, have been here a substantial amount of time. These create a lot of havoc on infrastructure, on housing. So to have a FEMA, somebody that can oversee these projects is vital. FEMA has certain guidelines that need to be met when we're overseeing these and tracking these projects. To do those initial assessments, those initial damage assessments, to have them right so that when they initially go in and we find out what the funding is, it's important that we track those projects from cradle to grave until that project's complete. So having that's vital, especially when you talk about this disaster in particular, the cost share on this was no cost to the city. The federal government picked up 75% of it, and the state picked up the other 25%. And to have the ability to work with the state officials on a regular basis as you're moving a multitude of projects, 70-plus projects, and a lot of our waterways through is vital. If we don't get that stuff removed in a timely manner, get the pumps fixed, other infrastructure that was affected, the next event's going to be even more catastrophic. So being able to do these in a timely manner is crucial and having somebody that's dedicated. In addition, that person, the work that they perform on those different disaster declarations, their time, when it's tracked, is reimbursable through administrative costs under the FEMA programs. So we need to make sure that we have that project funded or that person funded so that we can go ahead and march through these, get these waterways cleared out for the next event. It's going to limit that flooding capacity, and it's going to make the city of Scranton, at the end of the day, more resilient by doing that.
Larry, in the budget, so I see that, so we're talking about the engineering project coordinator, correct?
Yes.
And you put a DPW floater. Is that the street and sidewalk inspector?
That's correct. Yep. So that's an additional to that street and sidewalk.
So there's, right, you're adding an additional street and sidewalk inspector.
Correct.
And the engineering project coordinator. All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I have questions. I don't know if I should start with the sidewalk inspector. I guess I'll start with that one first while we're discussing that one.
Sure.
So the position that we have in the budget is for a floater, and it's going to float between traffic, and it's going to float between pave cuts inspections, correct?
Correct.
What's in here? That's a salaried position, so we're not going to, I know there's probably different pay rates depending on traffic and also on pave cuts. Is that, and there's different daily hours, correct?
That is true. There are different, there are different salaries, but this is not a salaried position. This is going to be an hourly position within the clerical union. Bless you. So I know that question had come up regarding are they going to earn more money when they're doing traffic. The floater position's only to assist. It's really for pave cuts. It's, they're both are in the clerical unions, but it's for a pave cut. That's the position for it.
Okay. When it comes to that, is there a peak time of the year? Like, the summertime when we're doing those pave cuts, when we're doing these restorations, that's going to be a peak time for this person, and then other times of the year, they're going to be working in traffic, or how are we going to break that?
Well, I think it's going to be an SD, but the truth is that the pave cut, that's nine months out of the year. They're not, they're not just for overhaul or paving. They're also for emergency pave cuts. So, and again, that's, if there's one thing we do get complaints about, is the amount of pave cuts that are not kept up or maintained or brought back to condition. So there is a workload there, and if we do intend on keeping up with that and making sure that the utilities are keeping up with it, we need another individual to help in that, in that space to maintain them.
Similar to the basins question, I know Mr. Priambo, when he was here, he was working on identifying the restorations that needed to be done in the city, and I think he told me one-third of them, well, after a two-year period, it's on the city to restore these projects. But he was trying to identify each and every one of these projects so we could do the restorations on them. Has that ever been completed, or that...
Well, I could say, when I come in, there was a list that we worked off of. I did meet with our pave cut inspector numerous times, and we've communicated back and forth with a pave cut person here in the city and with the utilities. We have got caught up on, there were a couple that had been restored, that were not restored properly. We went back and got them again. So to answer your question about which ones, the list is, the list to maintain is a list of completion. It's not, once it's repaired, that we don't go back and repair it again. It's typically done. So the work list gets knocked off.
I think there were a need to repair, but it was which ones were on the list that we were, you know, the utility did the work but didn't come and do the finish work.
Yeah, there were a couple. When I first had, again, when I first come in the springtime, there were a couple of those that were identified, and I worked with Patty, our pave cut inspector. We did go out, to the best of my knowledge, unless there's something out there that I'm not aware of, but to the best of my knowledge, we did work with UGI and American Water, and we restored those couple that were in question. One was up here on the top of Lackawanna, maybe one was up on Emmett or some other street that I know that were, that were hanging out there under what you're talking about. They were not repaired properly, but we did get them fixed.
Yeah, I felt like he had a large number, but I don't remember what it was, but he was saying there was like a third that were identified, a third that needed restoration that might be on our watch now, and then a third that might have been...
Well, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think we have anything hanging out there that we have to go back and fix. I think they're all...
To date, I don't know. I thought the data in front of me could honestly answer that.
But I don't think there's anything, not that I'm aware of. It comes to me every day that I'm...
But it's a good question. It's identifying that need. You know, this one person can't do, hasn't been able to do all that.
Yeah. Now, when we, at this position, we have, we have two. We have the engineering project coordinator for DPW, and we also have that FEMA coordinator with the Bureau of Fire.
Yeah.
Are these overlapping positions? Is it a duplication of service? Is there delineation in what these two positions do?
Yeah, I mean, the chief could talk a little more about that when his time comes up, but we will address that. There are some similarities, and there were some of the responsibilities, but I think the chief could articulate more regarding the position in the Fire Department and how they can work together and what the responsibility to delineate those for you. Okay? Any other questions? Or can I go on to the capital pieces? Okay. So the 1.346 million in capital investment, again, it's a total between all the departments. I often joke with Scott here regarding about the amount of money that we spent, the city has spent on capital improvements up there last year was a pretty decent amount, and we still continue to get some equipment in, thankfully. But the 1.36 is a reduction, but in the budget this year, we do have up there for some bridges. That's the Ash Street Bridge. We have a large share in that, in the $600,000 area. The Green Light Go, there's two projects. There's one on Greymore Street. I think someone here may have mentioned that already, and also there's two on Cedar Avenue. There was a question that came here from someone on council asking about Greymore Street. The reason why it is not out yet is we were, PennDOT recommended that we put them all out together. So the Greymore Street one is ready to go. The two on Cedar are not quite ready to go, but we're close, but we're going to put all three of them out together at the same time. So that's why it hasn't gone out yet. And then we put up a backup generator, DPW, again, for, I just articulated, it's emergency response and the things that it's responsible for. Ironically, it does not have emergency Ironically, it does not have emergency generation, electric generation up there should we need to, power go out in the middle of the, of a snowstorm or whatever. So, we, we need to, we need to fix that at some point here. So, that's, that's on there as well. And I put down just the general, you know, garage safety improvements and some additional equipment. There are some small things that we do need to put back in the budget for next year. So, this is just a quick little snapshot about how much the increasing has, the spending has gone, the budget for DPW. The gray line is 2021, it's about 12 and a half million dollars, give or take. The orange line is, is last year, 2022's budget. That's about, it's about 16 million and change. And the blue line is this year's proposed, it's 19.2. But I, let me stress to you that the 19.2 is, we have the minus out, the 3.4 million, that's not going strictly to DPW, but it's in our budget for, for the FEMA, for the FEMA projects.
So, Larry, while you're talking about that, I don't know, maybe I missed that in the beginning. That Bureau, the administration, public DPW administration has gone up 2.0, or 3.2 million. Is that the, the money you were just speaking of right there?
The DPW administration is the 3.4. That is, well, the 3...
It's gotten 3.8, 7.1?
Yeah, so if you look at the 3.0, hang on, I'm going to find it here.
And it falls in our professional ser, well, it looks like it falls in our professional services?
That's where it's at. 3.4 is in the professional services. That's the 3.4 for the FEMA, for the processing. So, we're, so it's actually passed through. So, again, we had, we had to show the income when they, when they do reimburse us as an expenditure, so it's, it's in and out. So, it's not just, we're spending the money, then it's going to come in. We had to show the money in and the money out. So, that's why we put...
That's for those 70-plus projects.
Yes.
Thanks.
Now, again, I want to, let me say something on that too. Scott and I sat down and walked through all those projects. We identified some that we could do with our, with our own forces and others that would have to be subcontracted out. We guesstimated somewhere around 25% we could do in-house, meaning we could do it with our own forces. But the rest would have to be contracted, which means we'd have to put RFPs in, or, you know, RFPs out for the work. So, there is a lot of work that needs to be done for those projects. Some of them are, some are really small projects, other ones are rather large, some encompass very small areas, others are full stream beds and take up several blocks. So, they, they range in size and scope, but, but that's what the 3.4 is.
Yeah, and that's all from the 2018 flooding?
Correct. You asked me a question on that too, now it just dawned on me.
What was it?
You had asked about the two, it just, I, I, you had asked about two different things, but I'll get back to you after the meeting today. I'll, I'll follow up with you on something. You had asked about the two different emergency...
A week or two ago?
Yeah.
About how many actions we've taken on those emergency numbers?
Yes, there's two different codes.
Correct.
So, I'll follow up with you after. So, that's basically what I have in, in the budget. I know it's presented to you. I don't know if you have any specific questions regarding our spending and what we have proposed here tonight, but I'd like to just close with the DPW piece. And I mentioned this a while back when we first opened with the mayor. You know, we, we don't often think about our, our public safety and our, our forces working together, but I, I will tell you that, and I gave the example, if there's a house fire and the fire department arrives and they put the fire out, they call the police department, they can, you know, they have to, they cordon off the, the building, they call our code enforcement, they come and condemn. Typically, code enforcement will call our DPW out and we'll board the place up. So, we do touch a lot, and that's just one example of how our different departments interact on a regular basis. And I think that, I think as we professionalize and as we invest in our DPW and the more things we could do, and I, and I know I'm kind of getting a little, a little ahead of myself here, but we will be at some point, hopefully, introducing some legislation that would allow the city to recoup some of those dollars for the work that the DPW does in those emergency situations. Right now, we're not allowed to do that, but we'll work with that, with the council to get some legislation teed up to make sure that we're, we have the ability to do those things.
Larry, I have just a question.
Yep.
And it's really not a big, I just noticed, like, you have, in the Bureau of Garages, you have a mechanic and a diesel mechanic. They're both presently at 46, 136, 89. One is getting a $2,223.94 raise, the other one's getting $922 increase. I was just wondering why those two, why was one different than the other?
I had the same question for you. Yeah, looking like they all made the same for 2022, the motor vehicle repair mechanic and diesel mechanic, but then in this year's budget, the diesel mechanic is making slightly less with the increase compared to the other two positions. So, we weren't sure if that was in, in error, if they're meant to be...
The Bureau of Garages, number 85, right near the bottom, mechanic and diesel mechanic.
So, the short answer is, I, I think I know that the answer here is that the, the diesel mechanics are, are clerical and the mechanics are DPW. I know that, but they got different rates. The one only got a 2% and the other one got a different increase.
What's that? The diesel mechanic is what?
Diesel mechanic will be DPW.
The diesel's DPW, we've got them backwards in, in there. But, so the, one of the, one of the mechanics, there's two, I'm sorry, there's one that would be a, under the clerical union, which was a 2% increase, and the other is going to be DPW, which is a different, they got a different raise and a different contract. So, that's why there'll be a disparity between them. That's my initial setup. Without having, when Open Gov came in, there, there's not the complete definition on these, so they do get a little, they get a little confusing when we're just on general identification. But I could follow up with the, on that to make sure I get clarity, but that's my initial thing.
Contractual.
Yeah, it's contractual.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll follow up to make sure that's what they are. I'm pretty certain that's where, that's where it is.
Yeah, it just seemed odd, but that, that makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Any other questions for DPW?
So, I have, I have two others. The one i- is in revenues. So, 2021, we budgeted 1.7 in delinquent refuse collection. In 2022, we, we budgeted 2.5 million, but currently, we've only received 1.628. So, we're about 700 and, or 871,000 short there. Do you know the, the reasoning for that, how we're going to make that up?
So, you're on, you're on revenues for...
I'm on total revenue. It's revenues for delinquent refuse collection. So, we budgeted 2.5, but we've only received 1.6. And this year, we are going to, well, I'll start with that one.
You're on the landfill, right?
Can we land on, can you give us that? I'm sorry.
Say that one more time.
You're looking for the landfill.
So, 302 landfill fee, and the second line item is delinquent refuse.
Oh, it's right in the beginning. I'm sorry, it's right in the beginning here. Oh, so, yeah. So, we did, we did reduce, so the 6.8 is still, still stagnant. Are you looking at the delinquent refuse?
Yeah. I'm looking at the second one down. So, we budgeted for 2.5, but we've only received 1.6. So, it's a shortfall of 870,000.
Yep, it's, it's a shortfall from this year's collections?
Yeah.
Well, no, that's, that's your date, that's only from August. So, we, we're actually on target for this year for...
Okay, do you know where we're at at this point?
Today, we're at 1.8.
You're at 1.8.
Okay.
Did you have a question about 2023's?
Yeah, so now when we look at 2023, you've budgeted only 1.3. Is there a reason that's so low?
We did. We believe that universe of delinquent garbage collection is actually getting smaller. We did receive some updates on, on some of the other refuse collections. So, we did, just again, being conservative with the numbers, we did bring that down a little bit to come in the line what we anticipate collecting next year.
Okay, when we, just recently, we had the, the collection, is it Port...
For Portnough?
Um, didn't they have $2 million identified for collection this year? Wasn't that in the, in the document that we passed that contract upon?
They, they, they did, but that, that delinquent tax, we, we can't collect delinquent again. It's, it wants, it's, a delinquent's collected, it's no longer in that universe. So, we did consider...
Correct, but I thought they had identified at least 2 million that they were going to be collecting this year.
But it doesn't mean we're going to get it, though.
Correct.
Right, so they, they've identified as collectible, but not that we're going to collect it. So, that, that number's a conservative number that we feel is in line with what we could collect next year.
Gotcha. The, the overall collection is greater than 2 million, though?
Potentially.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, I thought that 2 million was, was for this year.
Yeah.
Or at least projected, and I understand you would, you would go under that, but is that, that's the reasoning for the 1...
That's the reason why we reduced it back. Yeah, we feel that, that universe of collection's actually getting smaller.
Okay.
Yep.
My, my last question is our director. We didn't, we haven't filled the director position yet. Do we have a timeline on when we're going to fill that position?
So, thank you for bringing that up on this free commercial for our director for DPW for Scranton. I really appreciate. We did, we did have someone that we've interviewed. We got to the finish line, we did make a position offer. At the end, he declined the role. At this moment, I'm not aware of anyone, it's still posted. I'm not aware of anyone that has applied for the, for the job.
So, how many, do you know how many we've had interview for the position?
I think we've, to date, we've had, we've had two applicants. One, one we did not interview, and the other we did. Again, that was just a recent one, we did interview. We went through several interviews, and then we did to make it, indeed, the mayor made a job offer to him, but he declined it at the end. You know, it, it's not, it is a difficult job, I won't, but, you know, I would love for someone to step into the role. I still get calls at 4:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday mornings, you know, but it is what it is. But we are still looking for a DPW director.
All right. We're, we're still advertising, it's still out there?
It's still out there. Yep. We have not had any success with it.
Thank you.
Part of, and I just, I'll, I'll add, it was not just salary, by the way. It, you know, he, he did have some concern about going through the waiver process, which the mayor, you know, would have been prepared to put up for him, but he, he, he did not have, he did not have young children, but he and his wife had moved to the area a couple of years back and they're settled outside city limits. So, you know, it was just one of those, so, but we'll, we'll keep looking.
That was what I was wondering, if the, yeah, if the salary component was a deterrent for people, if we've received any feedback about that, but with such a limited number of applicants, then I guess it's hard to...
We haven't had much success with it.
...determine. I did see the, the increase for that in the budget this year. Hoping to generate more interest in that position, correct?
Let's hope. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I turn over to the fire, fire chief?
Anybody else? Yeah, you have to go next. Chief Judge?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before he goes, any other questions, Scott? We do have who's on, so.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Sorry. Please, can I? So, I'm going to take you through some of the initiatives that we've done this year and some of our plans for next year. So, in the Bureau of Fire, this has been probably one of the busiest years in my 20 years here. As you probably well remember, back in the spring and early summertime, we had significant volume of fire here in the city. There's really no rhyme or reason to it, and if you talk to most firefighters, they would tell you it's usually cyclical. But where, where we're moving in the department is we're trying to move to a more proactive approach to making sure that we have a fire-safe community. So, that's been really the goal over the last two years. We've made some significant strides this year, and we're going to continue to focus on that next year. So, just to date, the incident response data for City of Scranton Fire Department, and this is through November 1st of 2020, we had about 3,060 incidents, 83 building fires, 11 of those were second alarm fires. We responded to 15 technical rescue incidents, which are typically either trench rescue emergency, missing person, something up at the gorge, rope rescue incident. And then that last statistic, and I have a handout for you, I'll give you before I leave, just so you have the, the information in front of you. The NFPA standard wants us to have apparatus on scene within five, five minutes and 20 seconds of dispatch. We looked at our times for this year, and we're putting our first apparatus on scene at an average time of four minutes and 30 seconds. So, we're meeting that metric. But the important part of this is we've still had six fire fatalities this year in the city of Scranton. Actually, actually eight. There was initially six, two more people died as a result of being exposed to some of that. They died a little bit later. The problem with that is we have such a narrow timeline in the fire service to be able to affect a rescue. So, anything we could do to shorten that time from four minutes and 30 seconds down even further is where we're trying to get. And we think that there's certain things that next year we'll be able to make, meet those metrics and come back here with some additional data, and hopefully that translates to some life-saving. We've had about $5.5 million worth of damage loss is what we estimate this year in fire loss. We've done 260 commercial fire inspections, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the initiatives. We changed the way we operated our hose lines, which seems pretty rudimentary, and it was something we passed in the capital budget last year, which got funded in the operating budget for this year, to replace our attack lines on all of our engines across the city. We replaced 19,500 feet of hose line and 46 nozzles. And what, the importance is of that is it's twofold. We're able to operate more efficiently and effectively on the fire ground and deliver a higher volume of water with what we call less nozzle reaction for our members. So, they're able to control those and put those lines in the service quicker. We were using essentially 90's technology, and it seems, like I said, rudimentary, but it was a big jump in what we're doing here in the fires, in the fire department and Scranton Fire Department. Also, you may have seen on social media, one of the vehicles that we purchased in July of '20, and this goes back to the business administrator's point on timelines to get stuff with the supply chains in this, in this country. We ordered that in July of '20, we took delivery Thursday of last week of that apparatus. So, it took well over two years to get that apparatus in. That's not just happening with large items, that's happening with our turnout gear, all of our equipment, we're seeing that. So we're starting to have to adjust how we budget and how we order stuff to deal with those delayed timelines. So that Rescue One is currently up at the Sorento Center. Shifts are going through and becoming familiar with the apparatus. That will get placed in the service on December 6th. It is replacing a 2009 vehicle. And that's the vehicle that responds and is the busiest apparatus in, in the city. Does about 2,200 responses annually, goes on all fires, goes on all vehicle rescues and all other technical rescue incidents. We also invested in the new K-9 this year. Uh, Inspector Miegatz is working Wazik, who's our new accelerant detection dog that was purchased through a company in Philadelphia that does, uh, training of K-9 specifically. The former accelerant detection dog is getting ready to retire. So, uh, Wazik was brought on in August of this year. He has already assisted with six investigations. He's also assisted the state police in two investigations outside the city as well. Our HAZ alerting device, this was something that we put in just due to the substantial cost increases that we're seeing in apparatus and the safety of our members operating on our roadways and highways and streets throughout the City of Scranton. The HAZ device is a device that's in every one of the apparatus. And when your, the lights are turned on, on the emergency vehicle, it sends a signal to any oncoming motorists that there's emergency vehicle operating ahead of them. So if you have Waze on your phone or some other app in your car, navigation app, it doesn't actually have to be running. You're going to get an alert that our crews are operating on an emergency scene. This is used exclusively, or excuse me, it's also used by the Pennsylvania Turnpike on all their vehicles. And one of the things that's very dangerous to us is operating on those roads. And in, I believe it was 1981, we had a lieutenant that was killed on 81. So it's important that we could do anything to protect our members as they're operating out there on the streets. The other thing we implemented this year, which was a, a big change in operation, we now have computer aided dispatch computers in every one of our apparatus. Prior to us being able to put those in, the police department has them. And they could tell you where, by the GIS that's on those, they could tell you where all 1,400 hydrants are in the City of Scranton, but our, our crews were still using old map books. So we initiated that in there. And what we're getting is we're getting real time data from comm center. And it's an alternate way to dispatch our crews if for some reason there's a failure at comm center. So this gives us real time as the 911 call takers entering it in. They might be sending that information to the dispatcher across the room. And if they miss that, our crews are able to see that updated narrative. And that's crucial information when we're responding to the scene. So we were able to implement that into all of our vehicles this year. We've also moved to battery operated, several battery operated tour platforms. That was also in the capital budget that was approved. Uh, all of our jaws of life, our hydraulic equipment is now battery operated, which gives us the ability for mobility and access to be able to get into different places. And so we're starting to move over into that technology as well. Some of the inspection ordinances that you have passed here, counsel, are going to pay dividends for us as well. Uh, one of them was the false alarm billing ordinance that you recently passed, and also the Bricer compliance engine, which is going to give us the ability to make sure that fire alarm systems are not being triggered accidentally and we're not putting millions of dollars of apparatus in our crews unnecessarily on the street for what we consider nuisance alarms. And then also through the Bricer compliance engine, we're able to get the data for annual alarm tests, sprinkler tests. Right now, we estimate our compliance is around 20, 25%, maybe less. Bricer believes they could take our compliance level up to about 90, 95%. So this will identify if a business is having issues early so that we're able to get our inspectors out there and get those, um, tracked down and fixed. That's our goal, to keep those businesses up and running, but also to make sure that their, their patrons and their workers are able to operate safely in those business spaces. So our community outreach, this is one of the things that we've really put into hyperdrive this year. One of the things that you passed last year was the, uh, grant from FEMA for the smoke detectors installation program. We're approximately 30% of the way through that right now. We've installed this year alone since April, in 411 residences, we've installed smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. And that is continuing to go forward as well. We were part of the mayor's pop-up city halls. We went to 17 of those with some community outreach for the smoke detector installation program and also fire prevention with over 120 hours of direct engagement with citizens. We also, in October, as you're well aware, is Fire Safety Prevention Month. And this year, we delivered fire safety presentations to 1,434 students in kindergarten and fourth grade across the city. We also went to 17 wellness and vaccine clinics. Our paramedics have been delivering vaccines, COVID vaccines and flu vaccines in coordination with Scranton Primary Health and the Public Health Coordinator for the City of Scranton, Dr. Saxena. Training, one of the things that we're continuing to do is leverage technology here and be able to track what we do. And that's an important function of what we do because when we go for our ISO accreditation in a couple of years, our goal is, as you know, we moved from a, a three to two this year. Our goal is to eventually move to a one. And we've been talking to Pennsylvania American Water. That's just a, a benefit of doing the things that we're supposed to be doing. But our ultimate goal on why we do those things is to make sure that we have a safer, uh, city and that our crews can work safer as well. So tracking training hours, which is a big part of that. There was, uh, 6,016 hours at the Hack Academy. On shift training, approximately 5,000. And then off shift training where members go out on their own and receive training was almost 2,400 hours, gained 59 national certifications by our members over this year as well. And we'll continue to track that as we go forward.
Uh, just on a note about that training. So I had noticed that in the budget, um, that for this year, that, that number has decreased from 2022. So you don't anticipate, um, as many trainings this year?
What that is, is it's not as many new recruits this year. We had a, a lot of people that were able to retire last year and did retire actually beginning of this year. So there was a lot that we had to hire for those two training. We currently have four in the academy and it escapes me right now, but we had several in the spring academy as well. So we don't anticipate as many vacancies next year. We're actually at full strength right now. So that's, that's the reduction in the number there.
Okay, great.
This is just a copy of our organizational chart. In the administration, uh, the administrative offices, myself, the deputy chief, we have one payroll clerk. We have a fire prevention officer, two fire inspectors, an administrative captain and a master mechanic that checks our fleet down at DPW. And then we work a 24, 48 hour platoon with the Kelly Day across three shifts that's run by an assistant chief. So the 2023 fire salary, um, if you look at the numbers compared 2022 to 2023, the only difference you're really going to see is the privates, which are firefighters. And the reason, because there's no, uh, new CBA right now. But there are still firefighters that are going through the progression of step one, step two, step three, step four. So that's why you see that number go up. We'll talk about the confidential assistance, CRR specialist, FEMA coordinator and some of the job duties that we've outlined as needed to help us move our community risk reduction strategies forward. And if you look up top, I know this was a concern last week about the salaries. Right now, the fire chief, five of the subordinates that report directly to me make more than I do.
Next slide.
The new position assists with all community risk reduction. And that's a whole host of things that we're working on within the Bureau of Fire between ISO rating improvements, additional outreach improvements, also strategies and initiatives and projects under the Bureau of Fire. We have several projects that we're doing right now, even, and we'll talk about them. The EMS feasibility study, which went through and is funded by ARPA right now. Assist with all FEMA and PMA disaster declaration projects to include management of the grant process, project management, closeout procedures, some of the things after you're tracking all those numbers, which is what they're doing on the DPW end, tracking those projects, making sure that they get to the end goal. There's certain project and closeout procedures that need to be accomplished as well. We also have FEMA grants that we work on specifically in the fire department, whether that's the Safer Grant, which we've had in the past. We have a grant that, uh, for training for 70 some thousand dollars next year. We still have to do all the closeout procedures on our current grant that we have open with the smoke detector. And we're going to continue to, uh, push forward with those FEMA AFG grants in the future. Also assist with the management of the Center for Public Safety Excellence. This is a credentialing that we're looking to possibly get in certification for our department that we're doing industry wide best practices. This is a pretty heavy lift that takes several years. This is somebody that's going to help assist with that project as well. And it would not just be specifically for the department. CPSC offers professional credentialing for our members, which assists with making sure that they're ready to do the jobs that they're, they're doing by attaining some national certifications as well. Also grant management for grants within the Bureau of Fire. We do several other grants. I think you, you're going to have one coming down soon. Pennsylvania American Water Grants coming down. They give an annual grant. There's an annual Office of the State Fire Commissioners Grant that we work on. We're also looking and working with, um, some folks from Director Cipriani's, uh, um, office on finding funds for AED replacement for the fire department and for the police department. And also conducts research and special studies, compiling data and reports on topics of administrative in, uh, interest, gathers and analyzes data, makes recommendations and prepares, uh, reports on a whole host of administrative topics to keep, um, our department of 140 moving forward. This is the 2023 fire budget, um, that you've, it's already been submitted to you. And you see the numbers we have up there through 8/31 of 2022. We expect on a couple of these items that we're going to come in under budget this year. Uh, we believe we're going to come in under budget on overtime and also the other salary line item. We believe we will probably also come in a little under budget on standard salary. And that's simply because we had some senior members leave and new members come in with, um, salaries that were at the entry level and not the historic 25 year retirement mark. So there'll be some, uh, savings in there as well, we anticipate. We follow those and track those, you know, weekly. We're in, in the system to look to see where our numbers are trending and where we're going. So some of the initiatives for 2023, uh, health and wellness in the collective bargaining agreement, uh, that's currently in force. We're supposed to be doing, um, physical, annual physicals to make sure our firefighters are fit and ready for duty. Uh, we've developed an RFP. The RFP went out. We've selected the vendor. You'll see some legislation coming up shortly for that, for a three-year contract to make sure that. And the goal of this program really is, it's not punitive in nature. It's to make sure that we can provide early detection, make sure that our members are healthy and safe. That's essentially what we want to do. One of the things that, uh, I had when I first came in in 2020, in July of 2020, we had 17 members out long-term sick or injured at that time. We're down to next week, we will have one. One off sick and injured in the department and two that are deployed on military leave. Uh, EMS feasibility study, we're working, that contract's been awarded. We're working with, um, the company right now to get the stats and data that they need. This is an important endeavor that is going to be very critical for us as a city to make a well-informed decision on how we're going to protect the health and wellness of the City of Scranton. This is something that's, um, and I'm sure the police chief would agree. We're seeing some deltas in this where we need to plug some holes and figure out what the best way forward for the City of Scranton is. And this company is a nationally renowned company that's done this all over. And they're going to provide us with some direction and some, um, different alternatives on what works best for that. Also the site planning, Fire Station 10 or Engine 10. So, and I know that there was some discussion about that. There's money in the budget to do an assessment on what that looks like. And, and I know that the East Mountain neighborhood is, um, they're cautious about where that's going to go. But I think as a city, if we were building this city today and we were only going to put the seven fire stations and the complement of people we have now, we'd probably lay it out a little bit differently. We have the opportunity to lay it out on what's going to work best for the city. That engine was put there in 1961, I believe. At that time, Engine 9 was open on Main Avenue. That has since been closed. Engine 15 was open on Ash Street. That has since been closed. Engine 13 was open in, on Gibbon Street. That has since been closed. Engine 14 was open in West Side on Luzerne Street. That has since been closed. So if we have the opportunity, that fire station was built for two people. There are days where we have three or four up there. Our house captain up there will tell you, this is so tight cramped that if I have to change my mind, there's not enough room in the fire station. I have to walk outside. So there's something that we need to do and it's not just about the space. It's about the carcinogens that our members are exposed to in that fire station and all fire stations. And we've taken a lot of proactive measures over the last couple of years to make sure that we're, making sure that these firefighters stay safe and healthy. Also the training center, and I know I've spoke to Councilman McCandry about this multiple times. We've been doing work on this and I know that, uh, CTC is anxious about this as well. And we have money in the budget next year to look at what a master plan like that would look like. And then to start to see if we can get funding to start moving that project forward. I think that's an important initiative for this department as well. And then also next year, we have apparatus that are coming in that have been ordered. A new Engine Four for downtown. And the current one will be going up to the Engine 10 to replace the 1993. We have a new air command unit that'll be coming in, a new chief's vehicle that hopefully will, uh, assistant chief's vehicle, the duty chief's vehicle will be in hopefully by the end of this year. And another inspector vehicle that has been ordered, but it's just, it's a delay in getting even a Ford pickup truck at this point. So that's all I have. Any questions?
I have a couple. Um, I was wondering, you just brought it up with, um, new equipment. So even when you have those delays, when, like, do you begin paying on them immediately? Or how does, um, how does that work with the payments?
So we wait until we get delivery of the equipment before we release payment. Now, on some of the apparatus, when we're purchasing large apparatus, what we will do is, uh, we will do a prepayment, which gives us a discount on a certain percentage of that. They do offer that. We have taken advantage of that once or twice before, but for the most part, it's on delivery.
Okay, and so then that's factored into the budget based on, uh, the anticipated delivery?
Yes, it's put in the capital budget and then we put it in the, uh, capital budget line item in the operating budget.
Okay, and then, um, you had, uh, quickly referenced, uh, Naya Gorge earlier when you were speaking. And I was just curious if there's been either like an increase or a decrease in the amount of rescues that have to, uh, take place there? Because I understand that's a waste of, of resources, um, when that has to happen. Uh, and I didn't know if, uh, if anything has changed or if there's any way to lessen the, um...
I think it's been pretty steady over my 20 years here. We always know when St. Patrick's Day parade happens here, we start looking at, all right, the gorge is going to be here before we know it. We'll get our personnel down there, start doing a walkthrough for familiarization. Cause it's the same with flooding. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So that's the single biggest thing that keeps me up at night during the summer is our crews operating that, especially after a, uh, heavy rain event. That's probably more, our firefighters and our staff are, I put them up against anybody with anything, especially building fires. That's the bread and butter. But what really keeps me up at night is putting our members in harm's way in that gorge. Um, and you know, it's been happening for decades upon decades and I don't see an end in sight.
Right, I understand it's a longstanding issue, so I just wasn't sure if there are any changes. Uh, and then I had, uh, one more, uh, topic that I wanted to see if you could elaborate a little bit more on. Uh, tonight we'll be considering new legislation for introduction, uh, that changes the rental registration process. Um, and wanted to see how you felt about how it would, uh, impact inspections and fire safety.
Yeah, I think the rental registration, anything we could do to make that compliance better. If our inspectors can get in there and make sure, hey, we're going in there doing an inspection. Maybe you need smoke detectors. And like, you know, the business administrator said, there's a really good working relationship across all departments in the city. And there's a lot of communication that happens on a regular basis. And our fire inspectors work with code enforcement on a daily basis. So the rental registration staff as well, if they're able to identify places that need those smoke detectors, anything we can get in to those buildings to have early detection, I think, is huge, not just for the occupants, but also for the city to make sure that structures don't have to get torn down, burned out structures. And to make sure that our crews are able to safely return to their families after their shift.
Okay, so is there already a work process or workflow identified for, once we have those, um, those people performing the inspections to get that information over to, say, the fire department? If they need additional things?
Yeah, our, our, our fire inspectors are in daily communication with code enforcement. So when they identify something, and same on our end, if we identify something when we're out there, we work relatively close together.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else? So my question is going back to the, the two positions. We, um, the fire department has a CRR specialist FEMA coordinator and the DPW has the engineering project coordinator. Both of those are dealing with FEMA funds. They're dealing with FEMA projects and disaster declarations. Can you give me a, a breakdown of how these positions are different, how they're different? How they don't duplicate services?
Yeah, I think, uh, especially on our end, it, it's going to be more tied to doing those initial damage assessments. When a disaster does happen, that position would be able to assist with that. So when a FEMA project or disaster declaration occurs, you have to have a certain percentage of damage that has to be outlined before that, that takes effect. So having those initial damage assessments and then the work afterwards is something more so that what DPW is going to focus and concentrate on. I think that's the importance, making sure that, you know, they're working closely with the city's designated engineer to make sure they can identify those projects. In our, in the job description for ours, it's more on community risk reduction. It's going to be hazard mitigation grants. It's going to be dealing with, uh, professional credentialing for the department. It's going to be dealing with a multitude of the projects that we're kicking off the ground. One of the things that we're doing next year that's never been tracked appropriately in our, in, in our department has been, I have a million, over a million dollars worth of PPE, the turnout gear, boots, helmets. I can't tell you, other than looking at old spreadsheets where all that is. We've identified a vendor. We've started to get all those, um, assets. We need to be able to track those accountable assets. And that was one of the metrics, as soon as I got in, I saw that, hey, this is something that we need to do and we need to get our hands wrapped around it relatively quickly. Cause those are taxpayers' assets and we need to be able to track them appropriately. So that's one of the projects that we'll be working on as well. We're going to be doing that with a multitude, not just our PPE, but our air packs, which are about $7,000 apiece, our radios, the same. Uh, like the business administrator said, the prices keep going up on everything. So right now, we have essentially one payroll clerk that works in our, in, to manage 140 and do all the payroll and bills and everything else. They're not going to be taking work away from them, but they're going to be doing other work, especially in the emergency management space. Right now, the emergency management coordinator, the position that I have... Right now, the emergency management coordinator, the position that I have, our emergency management plan needs to be updated, and that's a heavy lift, and those are projects that they're going to work with. The, the backside of a disaster recovery, the best thing you could do is making sure you have a plan in place, doing the preparation and prevention, and that's what we're starting to focus on, rather than being reactive. That space that DPW coordinator is going to occupy is basically responding to the disaster and tracking the projects afterwards. The position I have in the budget, we're really going to be working on the emergency operation plan for the city, to be able to start to do the proper preparation, develop planning for responses, and at the end, hopefully do additional mitigation to prevent any damage to infrastructure. So they're going to be working projects with me on that.
So, yeah, it seems like you have different, different areas there. Thank you for that answer. Is there anything here, is there anything in the DPW job description that this position wouldn't be able to do? Is there anything in that DP, what I'm seeing here, you're looking for a little bit more experience, you're looking for a little bit more education than, than that DPW position. Is there anything here that this, is there anything in the DPW new position that this position here in the fire department cannot do?
Well, I think, I think the chief articulated properly where the majority of the work, bless you, the majority of the work that the chief's looking for to his department is really preventative things, making sure the department, the city is well-prepared for. The DPW position is more of a follow-on, so when we do have those contracts that go out, the follow-up for the repairs, the follow-up with the FEMA, again, the guidance that they require to follow through with any of the projects that we, that we deem that, well, when they deem from, from emergency, just to follow up. And forget that, you know, the paving, rehabilitation for stream banks, all those things require some project manager to maintain them. And I, I don't want to sit here and point fingers, but I could tell you that in my time prior to coming to the city, I always wondered where, you know, how those projects or why dollars didn't come to the city, it's, there was just no bandwidth to follow through with them. So I, I think, I think it's easy to see that over the last several years, the city has been really progressive, and they've been, they've been really going after a lot of the grants and making sure that we did follow through, but it takes, it takes personnel, it takes bandwidth to make sure that we follow through, and we, and by the way, we do it the right way, cross our Ts, dot our Is, applications are filed on time, deadlines are met, and that when we're closing these things out, that we don't have, we don't have a gap in, in reporting. So to Chief's point, I think his position is more about the front end, and the DPW is more about the back end, and making sure that we come to compliance with the, with those projects.
Okay, the, um, those two, the two items that I asked you about, the, the disaster relief numbers, one was the flood in 18, and the other one was COVID.
Yes.
Correct? Do you know when the, the previous, prior to 18, when was the last disaster declared? Do you know in the state of PA?
I don't know that.
I think there might have been a snowstorm in 17, but I'm not 100% sure, but there's been quite a few, I know, over the 20 years I've been here. I know some of them, they applied for them and they didn't meet the threshold, but it still required those projects to be fixed. Might not have been met the metric for FEMA or PMA funding, but nevertheless, there was substantial damage done, flooded areas that needed to be fixed and rehabilitated, so.
Yeah, so that one prior, it was in between like, say, 15 and 17, that was in, in that year, there were snowstorms. I don't think the county met the threshold with it.
Correct.
Because I don't know if the city was, had all of that in line. That work, how?
And I, I hear where you're going with that, I, I, you know, let's hope that we don't have an emergency every year, or every other year for that matter, but the fact is that here we are from 2018, still chasing after 3.4, 3.5 million dollars worth of damage that was done in the city. You know, one coordinator, again, the chief mentioned, we could get some, some reimbursement on the administrative costs for it. Those dollars, those, the damage to projects don't go away, but if we don't manage the projects properly, the money goes away. So I think it's critical that we, you know, we're going to find ourselves in a position where if it's once every other year, every third year, whichever it is that we're positioned well, that we do have the resources on hand to manage and mitigate those things, so.
Yeah, where I was going was, you know, that the disaster happened in, say, 16, 17, how long did it take to get those projects done? Do we know that offhand?
Yeah, so I think every project's different based on the scope and what they do. With 72 projects identified under the 2018, some of them have already been completed, and some of them have already done, been, had closeout done on them. There's a bunch of different categories that they fall underneath. So there are specific timelines, and you're able to ask for extensions, and you know, COVID was one of the things, and, and I got to be honest with you, one of the things that really impacts us is we have a very narrow window to get those done, because a lot of these waterways, they have restricted times when those crews can operate due to, you know, fish and game restrictions. So there's a very narrow window between the spring and the fall where they can actually get in there and do that work. And then with COVID, that ended up delaying the project, so we were granted extensions to make sure that we can complete these projects, because it's vital to making sure that we reduce the risks to our people that live down in those flood, flood-prone areas, and get these projects across the finish line.
With that being said, how, how long was the extension?
Till December 31st of next year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I have a quick one. So first of all, as chairman of the Committee on Public Safety, I can attest that your firefighters do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
You talked about response time earlier, so what impact not having the SAFER grant had on response time or anything else in, in the past year?
So...
Either you have identified, or can actually, actually say that, wow, we, you know, we really could have used that.
So the SAFER grant doesn't have an impact on response time, because the SAFER grant was, how we put that grant in, was to increase staffing per apparatus, to have more people at the scene of fire to meet NFPA 17-10. So response time, no, it wouldn't have impacted the response times, because we weren't going to open up additional companies in different parts of the city, but what we were going to do is make sure that they were staffed, we would increase staffing on that apparatus so that we would have better efficiencies and effectiveness on the fire ground.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can move on now to Chief Carroll. Thank you, Chief Judge.
When I first took command of the Scranton Police Department, my focus was I'd do review, and I wanted to focus on increasing efficiency and accountability within the police department. These are challenging times for law enforcement, and really, everything we do is under scrutiny. And we have a lot of factors that are playing against us or cause friction for our daily operation as we move forward, especially when we talk about budget. So while doing, planning for this, this budget, I thought it would be best to enlighten you on some of these, these friction points, what we're doing good, and give you analysis of our police department, and then you can see why I have a lot of the items that I do in the budget might justify it as we move forward. You go to that next slide, please. First and foremost, our strength. The, the three major items in my budget piece, personnel, our vehicles and our technology, and in that order. We're demanding a lot from our police officers today, and I'm very proud of them, they are rising to that challenge. They're out there doing a, an excellent job in, in very difficult situations, and all of their moves are videotaped, either by us or by, you know, citizens. It's very transparent. The vehicle aspect, this is, this is the addition, so the, the officer getting from one spot to another, in that vehicle, we need reliable fleet that can sustain all of the technology that we put into it. They're like a cockpit now. So everything is interdependent. My job as the chief of police is to make sure our officers get the very best training they can receive, and make sure that they have the very best equipment that they have to do this job that we are paying them to do. The vehicles, it becomes a challenge. So if you look to the, under the weaknesses and the harmful spot, a lot of these, as I speak about one, you could look to the right and on the weaknesses and see the challenges that occur. Under technology, we have had so many advancements, it is making our job, it's, it's increasing our efficiency, it is an enabler for us to fight crime, to give professional testimony in the courts, it's going a long way as a force multiplier. Body cameras, dash cameras, the cameras throughout the city, all that technology, those three pillars, personnel, vehicles and technology, are allowing us to function and accomplish our mission. When we cross that line over to the, the weaknesses side, the, the impacts that we're having, some of the negative ones, we're operating right now and, at an 80% strength with the city of Scranton Police Department. It is, the manpower crisis doesn't just affect the police department, obviously you see it in the headlines, it is majority of police departments in the region, as well as any other work disciplines, not just the law enforcement department. The fleet management piece, bringing our vehicles, we have currently our usage, we buy a new car and we drive it until it dies, and usually runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We want to get away from that, as the chief talked about, even the DPW director, speaking about how difficult it is to get vehicles for one, and to get parts to replace them another. So you'll see in my budget where we're looking to infuse vehicles into our fleet, so we can give maybe a work, a work rest cycle in, and at the end of the life of that vehicle, we have some type of value left in it that we can roll into a next vehicle, or we can even sell if we are in that position to do so. Right now, when our vehicles are, at the end of their life cycle, they become scrap.
So I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is there a leasing program out there that, that's effective for police vehicles or other departments using it and having success?
Yes.
In relation to what you're, you're...
And that is one of the opportunities that we are seizing, I was just about to speak to.
Okay.
So I'll hit that now. We are in, working with Enterprise Fleet for leasing our vehicles. That gets us out-of-pocket expenses, we pay for, we get four vehicles for the price we would have paid for one, moving forward. We have four vehicles right now, our first four are, are being outfitted right now, and the program is officially kicking off to make this work. Looking into the future and the investment, we have another car coming in January, but our, our big lift, the infusion comes in May, where we've requested 12 cars to enter the fleet. Just today, I heard that those 12 cars may be in jeopardy because of an ordering conflict. The window to order new cars is approximately five weeks, it was in June, so if you miss that window, you're not getting a new car ordered for your department until the following year. That's the importance of the planning piece here. And to your point, it's more economical to do the lease options, not only that, but the price, the inflation has driven the prices of the new cars up to $7,000 per unit. It's not sustainable for us as we move forward. So yes, we have seized the opportunity for leasing vehicles.
How many vehicles are currently leased, are there any?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
How many vehicles are currently leased?
We are just initiating.
Or we're just starting it out?
We just kicked this off, so we have four vehicles that are being outfitted right now with all the equipment, we received those, hopefully, two weeks would be a nice surprise, and that would kick off our leasing program.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what's important to note is at the end of the leasing program, there is the option for, you know, rolling that into, sending it back, rolling it into another lease, or we have the option to purchase them moving forward, depending on our needs at the time. What's nice also is that this is tailorable, so as our needs grow, or maybe they, they shrink, we are able to, and the nice part about the Enterprise being so large that they can accommodate our needs as they fluctuate.
I'm sorry, did you say the, did you say the lease, or the term for the lease, the length of time?
The length of time for the lease is five years.
Okay, thank you.
Information sharing, we talked about how good our technology is, we, and there's so many different areas of technology that we, we ended up kind of siloing all of our technology, and it becomes, it's starting to compete against each other, meaning we have different databases that support different functions, like parking, record management system, our, our, you know, body cameras. So we're looking for technology now. We actually received funding for being able to merge all that data into one operating system, so instead of querying multiple databases, we're able to query it once and speaking to one another, like a virtual database, if you will, or a virtual command post, that's, we've received federal funding from Congressman Cartwright to get that up and running as, and it also sponsors to be able to train an officer to become the guru in technology. It moves so fast, we have so many, that it becomes challenging to be good at any single one of them. So we're trying to fix that, so we become more efficient as an agency by spreading that knowledge throughout the agency, and that is our goal moving forward. Under our opportunities here, we talked about federal funding, that 109,000 we received that is for that technology funding, that's to bring all those systems together, even pay for the salary of the officer as we move forward. Another big one that we received is, we didn't receive the money yet, but 3.5 million from Appropriations Committee, Congressman Cartwright, and that is, that is for growing our body cameras, that is growing our dash cameras, our tasers, and growing a package of supervisory tools and growing our training program. We have not received that money yet, so in the budget, you will see that we did put in for, under Axon, to continue our program with Axon. It is reduced, at a reduced number this year, because I couldn't guarantee the receipt of the money, so we have to fund the very basics of what we currently have now out of the budget like we're currently doing. So we are funding body worn cameras, evidence storage, digital evidence storage, new tasers currently, it's the, the bare bones of what we need, and that is, that we're paying for out of pocket. Keep in mind that, when that money arrives, then we will be able to expand that program and pay for what we have taken out of the budget for, to upgrade our officers with the best technology for the Axon program. Chief Judge spoke about another opportunity, online recruitment. We talked about, you know, we're operating at a low, a low number of people, the recruiting process is very long, we'd like to streamline that, I think this could give us the opportunity to do so. It won't necessarily assist us with the training piece. The training begins historically, January, the Act 120, we have to train officers, and we're not seeing them graduate until September. Really, right now, the process is about one year before we actually get any type of return on our investment when we hire. The online recruiting is, they have a number of people that visit their website every month, 88,000 is what they tell us. 88,000 people who are specifically looking for law enforcement, fire jobs. That broadens our search area, that gives us, they also assist with recruiting in those areas as we put out, so focusing more on the digital recruiting through the... areas, as we put out, so focusing more on the digital recruiting through the webpages, social media, versus the black and white print paper moving forward. We hope to get approval for that and get that up and running within the next month or two, would be a goal. We are currently under, we've seized the opportunity for the accreditation grant, we have that, we are fully underway with accreditation process, we are reviewing every single policy that we are, we have right now, it's a daunting process, but the vendor has been very supportive, and I don't have a timeline necessarily when we'll be credited, the average is about two years, maybe 18 months, but we're well on our way to make that happen. Another opportunity that had fixed the budget, keep in mind, as we recruit, and you'll see another line item requested in my budget, was for training new officers. When we pay for the Act 120, we pay for their salaries, they go to school to become a trained officer, the state will reimburse us 75% of the schooling, the tuition, and 45% of their salary, so we're starting to see that come back to us, so it's a portion we're making out there.
With that one...
Go ahead.
In 2021, that, that line item, and you can correct me if I'm looking at the wrong line item, it was like 69,500 or so? Last year, we budgeted 155,000, and this year, we're down to 115. And year-to-date of August, it says we spent about 51,389. Is that also, we're bringing that down about 30, 40,000?
Is that line item just specifically training?
Yes.
Okay, so this, that is not all for initial training, that is for sustainment training for the officers as well?
Okay.
So it's not all classified under Act 120.
Okay, that would fall somewhere else? The one that you were just talking?
We do take out of there, it doesn't have its own item, it will come out of that training allotment that you have there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And quickly, if I just speak to the threats, that, we call them threats that are affecting our business and how we perform and the management of the agency, and that is the poor public support nationally. One thing I need to say is that our support here has been fantastic. Doesn't reflect locally, but it does impact our ability to recruit people to be police officers. It's not a popular job anymore at this time, hopefully that pendulum will swing the other way soon, but we have a real challenge in recruiting. A test that used to have hundreds of people come out and take it, our last one had 40 people who actually wanted to take the test, they signed up for it. We will see, we have been seeing, and like every other agency, people, the job market is great, so if you ever wanted to try a job and you were afraid to leave a good one, this is it, and we're starting to see people take that opportunity, walking away after, you know, 12 years on the job, is this something I want to continue? They make that decision going forward. There's obviously a lot of other factors in their lives, whatever reason they take it, but we're starting to see a trend now where people are not staying the entire time up to retirement. As I said, we are operating low, we have nine permanent vacancies now, and we are expected to lose at least another 10 for retirement next year. We're able to hire two off this new list immediately last month, we are scheduled to have five go to the Act 120 in January, and another one to complete a part-time program in May, so we are getting people into our ranks, but it won't be at the rate in which we're depleting them. So it'll remain a challenge of recruitment, training, and retention as we move forward. And last, another impact for the, that's a threat to us, which could change those numbers, is the uncertainty of the contract as we move forward, we know we're, we are in arbitration right now, and depending on how that turns out, that could affect people's judgment on whether they're going to stay or whether they go. Okay.
Chief, you're looking to add a deputy chief?
I am, yes.
In this budget? Okay. So how, when's the last time, have we had a deputy chief in the past?
We have, I believe that changed in 1999, in the agreement, Chief Clea at the time, he was the last deputy chief, and he became the chief of police, and he was the last deputy chief that we did have. As we move forward, and now, I'll jump to my slide, but I will tell you is that the deputy chief is needed, when we talk about span of control, we start to talk about leadership, these, everything I just mentioned, this assessment, everything has to do with, with the leadership aspect of it. I will tell you, the structure that changed in 1999 is not the structure we need today. The responsibilities of the chief looking forward, dealing with the community council, strategizing on where we're going to be in the next five years, budget piece, community relations, it's very difficult to do that and to have the internal look of driving the agency operationally, to make sure we're functioning the way we're supposed to be doing, we have that accountability, we have that efficiency. The structure now, the other demand in our current policing is the fact that our society demands so much more of us today, so the transparency piece, the investigation piece, meaning are we policing our own? That's, that's the big thing people want to know. They want to know that if they make a complaint, that it'll be followed up on, it'll be looked into, and that lift alone is very daunting. So we're spending, our leadership now is spending so much of its time making sure we're addressing all the citizens' inquiries, the responsiveness, and we want to be more responsive to the community. So as they demand more from us, we need to be able to turn around and provide that. Coupling back with technology, we are trying to leverage technology so that even one aspect of this would be an outward-facing dashboard that provides an update to the community on all of our actions that we're doing. One less thing you have to ask if you maybe see it, I get a lot from Mr. Voldenberg, and I wish I could be more responsive to him for your needs that you sent through him. It's not that we're not addressing those needs, it is that it's difficult to track right now and to be able to provide all that data that you requested in a timely manner. That leveraging technology, that increase, that program I spoke of, should mitigate that and be able to provide a better product to the community.
Do you envision that being like a promotion from within the ranks, or a new hire from outside, or?
I do. No, from the ranks, the deputy chief being an appointment, and the, yeah, so the discussions were, would it, would it or would it not? If and when, if that was the case where the administration hired a chief of police from outside of the agency, the deputy chief should always come from within. No one knows the agency better than the people who work here. If I didn't know it, I'm, if I didn't know the agency, I'm not sure I would have had the success that I have had so far, having to have learned it, learned the personalities, learned the operations piece, that if anything changes, it should be that, or nothing changes, it should be that the deputy chief come from the ranks and stay as that knowledgeable subject matter expert of the Scranton Police Department. If we move forward, I get ahead of the slide, I'll show you also that it will not, that it's funded, that by the changes in the contracts over the years, and as our numbers change in certain areas, which, jobs that are being, like for a better term, they're not being used anymore, they're being displaced, they, that savings will make up for the cost of the deputy chief's salary. It's not going to cost the city anymore by creating this. I'll show you that in a slide or two up ahead. Did that answer your question?
Well, I just want to touch on that position.
Go ahead.
And this is no disrespect to you or your assessment of that need, but, you know, two months ago, I made a motion, reopen City Hall as it was pre-pandemic, right? I asked for some, you know, some rationale as to why we shouldn't, but, you know, a couple ideas were to utilize a police officer at the front door, and we were told that we can't afford it. But it's hard for me, and like I said, with all due respect, it's hard for me to understand we can't afford a police officer at the front door, but we can afford a deputy chief. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Not really.
Well, I do.
No.
It's, it makes sense to me.
And when approached with that, the police officer is not the, a security guard, and I'm against having one stand up post. Because of the request from council and the public that comes in, we have an officer that we put here part-time. We are operating at 80% strength, as I just mentioned. We don't want, and I'm focusing on efficiency, I don't want an officer standing guard here when an access control feature will do so much better and allow that officer to be on the street. That's the rationale from my point of view on this. When it comes to the deputy chief position, this is, the money, I will show you that you're not, this isn't creating a deficit to the budget, I'll show you how it's covered going forward, but also it's coming from the ranks, it is a needed position to where if we are to be responsive, if we are to follow 21st century policing models and accomplish everything, we have to be able to get outside of our 1999 rank structure. That's the philosophy in it, so that's my point there.
So to go back to that, when we're talking about security of this building, and we're talking about opening up City Hall, the, there's no current threats to the building, correct?
Current threats? I'm not tracking any current threats.
All right. The safety, isn't it during the day, during the building's operation? I mean, during council, there is a police officer here, I mean, I don't really feel any threats here at night during the meetings, and the building is open up to the public. Isn't it during the day that we're looking for this security? Isn't that what the door and the appointments function as?
Right, so this can go the other way as well. The only reason the officer's here is because council requested the officer to be here, so that's why we man it. We didn't always man council meetings. The door that's downstairs, if it's just the door that's the contention, the administration, which, and which I support, has an obligation to make sure its employees are safe. There's more people from the public that come in and out than sit right here. There's more people that need to be protected, 80-some maybe that work here, and that door is a means to make that happen, it's access control, it is common. And I think what's, and I know it's become a political debate, but we, our times have changed, and we need to understand that, we have to change with them. Do we hope something won't happen, or do we try to influence that? That's all that does. It's an early warning system in case something does go bad. Maybe it's a deterrent, but we can't predict human behavior. Just right now, we can't, we don't, we can't script any of this, but, what I will tell you is that it's best practices to have access control into a public aspect, public building. Not only is it the bad guy we're focusing on, but we want to know who's in the building in case an emergency happens, because we, if I invite a guest to my department, I'm responsible for that person's safety. It's a way to track that. There's no other reason for this other than public safety. So however it gets off-track, or whatever the beliefs are, that is the truth from me, and that's where I stand.
So wouldn't it further enhance public safety to have either an officer or a security person at the door?
Could it? Yes. Who's going to pay for that? I, I mean, I have to keep Manning on the road. It's, it's not an effective use of a police officer.
So I'm not, I'm not seeing the door as the contention, I think it's more the access of the building. You know, we get complaints all the time from people who've come to the building who can't get in touch with a department, something like that, and I think if it wasn't for these complaints that we get, I don't know if this would be on our radar, and I think that's why the public is bringing it to us, and then we're bringing it to the administration. So I mean, I could see, obviously the door is a deterrent for someone that's coming in, someone that might want to do any harm or any other thing like that, but the access to the building of the public is, is the thing that's the contention, not so much the physical door.
Well, I appreciate that, because the focus was put on the door.
My, well, my focus was put on this door, but...
That's another story. Yeah, so the, the people being escorted, nobody's being denied access if they have something to do here, that the person will be escorted into the building. That, that's all this is, access control, not access denial. As long as the building's open, citizens can go in and do their function, but let's be smart about it.
That's not always what we hear, so I'm just letting you know.
I can't speak to the process?
If I can. If I can, I know this has gone back and forth, and you're, the point you're making about access to City Hall, I think we're conflating the word access here. Is it access to the building? Is it access to the fourth floor? Is it, is it coming to meet individuals in City Hall by appointment or not by appointment? What I will tell you is this, this administration has taken steps to address those concerns. We now have a table in the lobby, there's a phone with everybody's number on it, there is access, direct access to the folks in code enforcement, that there are actually real people that work in there every single day, and there's only, to your appointment, I think there's about 70, 77 people somewhere in that neighborhood. We all know each other, for the most part, they make phone calls, so-and-so's down here to see you, I know they go to your office, I know folks from your, from your office go down, they get folks, walk them in. No one walks through City Hall unattended. I will tell you, a couple weeks ago, I had a gentleman stop me at the door, he wanted to use the restroom, let him in, use the restroom, and then he walked back out, but, but the point is that anybody who needs access, they get access. This part of not getting, if you're asking for unfettered access to walk through City Hall and go, go walk through every single floor, okay, your, your point, if that's your point, if that's what you think the point of what we should be doing here, but to the chief's point about safety and security, about the people who work in this building, maybe we should ask some of those folks what they think about, about having security here. I, I'll just say that we've done, the mayor and the administration, we've, we've talked about it, we've discussed it, we've taken, we've taken action on this. Anyone who needs access to the building, glad to walk down, meet them, welcome to my office, but we do have sensitive information around this building all day long, private information, confidential information, just, so I'm not sure what the problem is here, but to the chief's point, we should be smarter about these things.
Are all, all offices, are, all the employees in all the offices are here on a daily basis? And is anybody working from home at this point?
There are, there are some, there are some individuals who do work from home from time to time, we have the capability to do it, we change all of our technology to be able to do those things. I know that seems like it's, it's a talking point, but fact is that the vast majority, daily, the employees that work for the city work in City Hall and they're here. Is it every single person, every single day? I don't keep a roster count to make sure that every single person shows up for work every day, there are capabilities, we've made investments in technology to allow some of the employees to work from home as need be, as needed, and the department head allows it. They don't just randomly say, I'm going to work from home today. There are some employees that do work from home from time to time, but the vast majority of employees work in City Hall that are, that are assigned here. Okay?
So you're saying there's always someone in, in a department to be able to answer the phone if someone needed access to get up to that department?
There's always people in City Hall, and there's always a body in code enforcement, there's always someone here. There's always someone here. If they're suggesting that because they can't come through the door and walk into a specific office undeterred, then okay, that, that might be the case, but that's the reason why it's there. There is a phone that we, we had installed, we spent a couple thousand dollars to have the phone line installed here with the table, with all the phone numbers, so that anyone that comes in that has a question can reach out to anybody in City Hall, there's a directory there. Call to the office, the person's able to take the meeting, whatever it is, they'll come down and look at them. So if there's any other concerns, directly, please phone them right to me, I don't, I don't know if there's any, I'm here every day, and I, I do see folks coming in looking for permits and information, I see people all the time. If they have a question, I do see, again, come up to your office, they do come to the BA's office, they go to Human Resources, that someone from that department comes down and gets them escorts into that department. and gets them escorts into that department, and they walk them back out. Okay?
Thank you.
The strategic goals, you saw listed there, there's, there's six that I focus on, and again, they all tie back to, you know, what I have requested in the budget. I won't dive into any one of those unless you, you have questions about them, or you show that I have a vision of what I'm working on, and that's really a four-year program. If I can get to accomplish all of these, it takes time and a strategy to get that moving. There's no change to this. This is, this is what was submitted, I put up there in case you had questions about it. You asked me on, on this topic here? Excellent. Okay, and as discussed from the, this is my math, this is not, this is rough order, but it's to show that the changes that were made, the positions that were abolished in the collective bargaining agreement have taken hold. You see where, this year, we have two administrative lieutenants that are allotted. Lieutenant Nometka will be retiring this year, first quarter. So that will be, it'll be one administrative lieutenant. The fire marshal is retiring this year. That position is not, is abolished when he retires. Detective sergeants go from four to three in this budget. And corporals, last year, we had funded eight. They're down to four, and that will continue to reduce until there are no more corporals left, that rank becomes, that gets abolished. So the two positions in the budget that I'm requesting, the deputy chief, and I, when I, these numbers, I put some clarity to this, these numbers are based on how much over a fifty-year patrolman. So a fifty-year patrolman makes about seventy-one thousand dollars a year. The deputy chief makes thirty-one thousand over that. And then the animal control officer, part-time, adding another one, which would be a big help. Those two combined are fifty-one thousand dollars, and we're saving fifty-five thousand by all the corporals, the detective sergeant, the fire marshal, and the administrative lieutenant being dropped to a fifty-year patrolman rate, not paying that extra money for the, the rank.
I was going to ask you to provide some more background on the addition of the part-time animal control officer. I know they've been pretty strapped in terms of resources in that department.
They, they do wonderful work.
Yep.
And they're doing a lot of work. It's not just, we get into the realm of, it's not just picking up animals and taking them to a safe shelter. There's a lot of follow-up and reporting that goes along with it. So we have one full-time right now, and we have one part-time. And really, what we would like to see is, what I personally would like to see is, one, maybe support to the workload, would support two additional full-time animal control officers. However, it's more prudent to take it by steps and ask for an additional part-time to alleviate the load and see where we are moving forward.
So the two positions, one is the deputy chief, the other one is the part-time animal control.
Yes.
They're the only two?
Yes. Otherwise, our numbers remain the same.
Correct. So you're going to lose, with, with the adding and subtracting of the, the different, you know, rankings, you're going to lose an officer there and gain an admin?
I'm sorry.
You're going to lose an officer and gain an admin to, to make the numbers-
A patrolman. Right, right. So it'd be one of the one forty-seven, but... Other than that... So this last slide is... This is the, to show trending-wise, crime reporting between last year and this year, we are holding steady. This data, this is the reminder that this data is accessible on our website, Pennsylvania website, UCRs. You can access it from our website to see this at any time. So we're holding the line. Our people are working hard, they're professionals. I owe them the training and the equipment that they need to do the job, and respectfully request approval on my budget. Any questions for me?
I have a quick question. This budget is early since the days, right? So I wrote this down earlier. So this budget is reflective of hard-working people, our police officers that protect and serve every day, okay? Our retired police officers' well-being is just as important for the service they also provided in their careers. Could you please provide us with the status of the pre-nineteen eighty-nine contractual pension adjustment? And if back pay would be reflective in this year's budget, knowing the adjustment would come from the pension plan? I run into retired people, cops all the time, everywhere, at Garrity's, at the gas station, the supermarket. They're like, you know, it's a concern of theirs, it was contractual, they think it's a violation, they want to know what the update is, because, you know, I don't want to see another large lawsuit with the city with regards to this. I think it's a, I think it's a simple fix. I know there's talks going on, I just know if it's moving, like everything else. Like, you know, we hear the contracts are ongoing, but this, this could eventually, or could affect, even though it's pension-driven, could affect a budget if it's, if it's decided. So could you at least look into it for us, or provide me with an update, or have a response?
I can absolutely look into it for you. I can't recall it off the top of my head. However, and as you know, we are headed to arbitration on the contract. Whether or not that will be addressed then, I cannot say, but I will find that information for you, and I will get it to you.
Please, just an update, because I'm being asked, so I'm asking you.
Okay, will do.
Any other questions for the police chief?
No, I'd just like to thank Chief Carroll and Fire Chief Judge, Larry West and Matt for being here this evening. Really appreciate quite a bit of time going through this, but it's important. So thank you, and thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.